Need volunteers for the...
I'll go ahead and do it. Oh, Crystal's to go with?
Crystal?
Yep. I would be happy to.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda if everybody's okay with the condition of it at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda if it stands.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody said aye, so we were done that opening section. So now, I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Hester for her recognitions.
Alright, so it is July, so we have a little bit, since we haven't been in session for a little bit when it comes to our One Nelson Awards, so we really wanted to focus on, yes, really wanted to focus on recognitions of some of our community members, more specifically, we wanted to say thank you to our partners over at Three Notched. That is one of our business partners that we utilized this summer when we held our administrative retreats. So, any representatives from Three Notched that would like to come up and be recognized, more specifically when it comes to, and I'll wait for you to get up here. Sorry, I had to cut your video.
It's okay.
We'll make sure that Ms. Roydinger gets a picture and, hey, you know what? Are you able to video it? Because I cut short her video, so I want to make sure I don't do that. The first individual we're gonna recognize is Dalton Lafferty. He's Sales and Event Manager for Three Notched, and thank you for your time and effort in providing extraordinary service in an ideal facility for our 2024 Administrative Retreat. And through your support, Division Leaders were able to review the 23-24 school year and prepare for a successful upcoming year. So we want to recognize Mr. Lafferty for all his help. He was there the whole entire time and was incredibly attentive and supportive of us. So I couldn't sing his praises anymore, and I know Brandon Stinson was there on that, on one of the other days. So that was great to be able to see someone and have one of our staff members see what we go through in the summer to prepare and get ready for the school year. So thank you very much, and so I will hand this to you. So congratulations and for you two for being here. I want to say just overall for Three Notched, with the thanks and appreciation for your support of Nelson County Public Schools and its Division Leaders, through the use of her multi-functional facility and the professionalism of your staff. It was a phenomenal experience. You guys took care of everything from setting it up to getting the monitors and the technology ready. The food was phenomenal, so I couldn't, I couldn't be happier, and I know our staff was really appreciative of it. So thank you so much for your support of us, and we're gonna make sure we get a picture. So have you taken a couple steps this way, and you can hold on to that, and we'll stand right here? Alright, thank you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you. And now we will have a presentation on the Wildrose Solar, the proposed Wildrose Solar Project from Janine Johnson of Savion Energy. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I'm gonna keep this super brief, just want to introduce the School Board to our project, what we're proposing, and talk about a couple ideas that we could maybe partner with Nelson County to benefit the schools. I left the questions up here. So Wildrose is a utility-scale solar project. We work with Savion, we're founded in 2019. We're a Shell Group portfolio company. We're based in Kansas City, Missouri. I'm in, I'm in North Carolina, so I'm not too far away. We've got probably close to 200 employees right now. We've got a decent portfolio of projects in Virginia. This is probably the furthest along right now. Just want to touch briefly, I'm sure you guys are all aware, but how solar energy works, the panels absorb the energy from the sun, the energy gets distributed onto the large transmission grid, the substations, and the big power lines you see in the area, and then those, from those that get distributed onto the smaller lines that, you know, when you turn on your power, it takes you to your home and business. So, just a quick overview. I do want to highlight, you know, Virginia has a Virginia Clean Economy Act that was passed in 2020, so they have a goal of committing to 100% renewable energy in Virginia by 2045. So, just a couple of project details, it's gonna be in, hopefully gonna be a 90-megawatt project, which can power about 14,000 homes. It'll cover approximately 500 acres of panels, so it's a pretty big project. If we're successful, we're hoping to start construction in 2026. It would be about a 12-month construction period, and I'll touch on that a little bit further, but just for your reference, it's in the southern portion of Nelson County, about two miles from Gladstone, right off of Richmond Highway. A good point I like to use is the Corners, that, yeah, the Corner Store right there off of Richmond Highway and Ty River Road. So, just quickly, this is an overview of our design that we submitted to the Board of Supervisors for review, just gives you an idea of where our panels will be. It's a preliminary design, it is gonna be pretty spread out, which I think bodes well for, you know, animal traffic and moving in between of the panels. It's not, you know, a huge sea of panels all next to each other, which personally I think bodes well for a project. I want to highlight the local economic impact that a project like this can bring. We are obligated under the machinery and tools tax in Virginia to pay approximately 5.9 million in taxes to the county and state for our tools. Our proposal to Nelson County is to pay an additional approximately 5 million over the 40-year life, and that goes directly to the county where they can use it, you know, at their discretion, their supplemental voluntary payments. So, you know, that's, that's in discussion right now. The goal for this project is to really be out of sight, out of mind, no stress on local infrastructure, you know, we're not adding to, not using water, not using utilities, you know, if all goes well, we're not using emergency services, although we will be partnering with, with local services to make sure that they're aware of how to get onsite and that they can have proper access and ingress onto the site. So it really is meant to be a silent revenue generator for the county. And then I really want to highlight our partnership with Shine. It's a program that's in Virginia, they are an organization that provides solar-ready training, so they'll have a mobile lab which will bring out at the start of construction. So anyone who's interested in having a job will have a job available to them for that life of the, for that construction period of the project. That training includes panel installation, includes heavy machinery, includes OSHA trainings, so that will be available, anyone who wants to come can be trained and have a position available for them in what they get trained in. And I think it's a, it's a really good opportunity for, you know, young professionals in the area and beyond who can get free training and can really be like a career jumpstart if they're interested in that field in construction or, or heavy machinery. And then I wanted to highlight quickly some of the public outreach we've done, we've held several neighborhood community meetings. We're in the process of working through good neighbor agreements, we're offering to install solar panels on people's homes who are adjacent or really close to, to the project to make sure that people in Gladstone can directly benefit from the project. And we are trying to work with Fred in Gladstone, Joey in Apsher to make sure that, you know, Gladstone specifically can benefit from the project, so making sure that they can proceed with their moving of the Gladstone Depot, or if that's not possible, working with them to make sure that maybe Gladstone can have a community center. I know that that's, that's one of their goals. So, those are some of the things we've been doing. I want to talk to the School Board about a potential donation, I know you guys just closed an RFP to install solar on the high school, I think that could be a good way that we could help and support directly to the, to the schools, but also about donating a potential solar system so that STEM classes and clubs can go out and use it and learn how energy works. There's also possibilities for us to bring clubs out during construction so that they can learn firsthand how it works, what we're doing. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to partner, especially during the construction and beyond, to make sure that, you know, students in Nelson County are benefiting and can learn from, from this project, that if it's successful, we'll be around for a few decades. So, I'll wrap it up there, I told, I promised I'd be short, but thank you for the time, and I appreciate it, and look forward to potentially continuing conversations with you all.
Do we have any questions? No question?
Happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Alright, now we're out to comments from Board members. Mr. Perkins. I'm fine, how are you? Got any comments?
I'm glad everybody's doing well in the evening. I hope the summer's going well for everyone, and I think that's about all I have.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy the rest of your summer, it's gonna go quick.
No comments? No comments? And I spent a lot of time today thinking about this meeting, but I didn't think of anything to say for comments either. I would like to say thank you for, because I didn't say this in June, but thank you for a great last year, it was a rolling, I think. I can't believe it's over, and the next one's about to start, and holy moly, they're coming, aren't they? I remember that. Okay, then the next part is the important dates, which, there's some VSA stuff on there, new teacher orientation is the end of this month, 30th and 31st, instructional planning date is the first week of August, convocation is the second day of August, and open house is August 6th, first day of school, August 8th, so they are coming pretty quick. We will talk later about what day we're gonna have our August School Board meeting, because it's scheduled for the first day of this school, and I think that that would be hard to do, so we'll have to maybe look at that. I mean, we will look at that. And then, anybody else have any good dates in August? Nothing going on? Got any questions on that? Thank you very much. And comments from our esteemed superintendent?
So first and foremost, I want to say thank you to all of the individuals who have been working throughout the summer. I think sometimes people forget that the students and the teachers are not necessarily in session formally, but there's a whole bunch of other individuals working really hard to get ready for the next school year. Maintenance has done a wonderful job on ongoing projects that continue to have come about, sometimes surprising and sometimes planned, and the custodians who are taking care of getting our buildings ready for the opening of school. Transportation has done a lot this year of getting ready, getting the buses and the fleet ready, but also transporting our summer learning students. School nutrition provided the meals for summer learning and getting ready and doing some of their own professional development, technology, not only providing some of the technology for our competition students like FFA and FCC LA to be prepared for the different things that they're participating in, but also summer learning. Our human resources is seriously working hard to fill our vacancies with highly qualified staff, so we're pretty excited about some of these individuals, well, all of our individuals that we're bringing on, and we still have some vacancies to fill, but we're pretty excited about who we're bringing in. And talking with a couple of them as they do some of their paperwork or get familiar with some things, they're really excited about joining our family, so we welcome them. Finance has been working hard to close out last year and kind of reconcile all the different things and opportunities that we have to maybe provide some different avenues for us this year, which is great. And also the collaboration with Instruction and Spen and Finance to kind of navigate through the federal programs and getting all of that set up for next year and how we're gonna use that money, but also preparing for the next school year, going through CIE training, which is one of the platforms that we use that will, that will serve very nicely for us when it comes to growth assessments. The program we've been using, the benchmarks we've been using already, will actually be able to take the place of some of those growth assessments, so we're pretty excited about that. And then also our administrators, they're working hard to get their buildings ready, schedules ready, assignments and everything to be prepared for the next school year. We had a wonderful chance to collaborate with different groups like the Wintergreen Foundation, Nature Foundation through our summer school opportunities, but also Nelson County Sheriff's Office held a cop camp for a week at, at our school and was, we were able to provide transportation for those individuals, not only just coming for the class part, but also the field trip. They also integrated with one of our tag classes in the forensic sciences, so it was a great opportunity to bring some of those kids, some of them were homeschool kids. So when we talk about One Nelson mentality of looking for ways to support all of our community, all of our children, everybody involved, so we were pretty excited about that. Blue Ridge Medical Center, Nelson Wellness Fair is coming up on July 20th, also Nelson Night Out, which is, we're hosting for the Sheriff's Office on the 27th. I did just get back from the AASA Legislative Advocacy Conference, which was really an exciting opportunity. I know it sounds a little strange, when we're talking about all the legislative initiatives coming down, but I think it will be very important for us to be paying attention to that, both federally and locally, when it comes to different, different policies and legislation being put into play. And then last but not least, August 8th, it's coming, it's coming quickly, we just bypassed, we're under a month before we welcome our students through our doors. Our new staff will be coming in on the 30th and 31st, and all of our staff, our teachers coming in on August 1st. We welcome all of our School Board members to join us for All County Convocation Day, which is August 2nd, starting at 8:30. So we welcome and invite all of you to join us for events, and those are the updates that I have. I will send a reminder to you all as well.
Video invitation. Okay, do we have any comments from the public? Nobody signed up? Anybody like to say anything? No? Ernie, you wanna say something? Alright, alright, we'll split that part. Alright, well, I always let, if you don't want to stay any longer, you certainly need to talk to, but if you want to hang out and listen to the cringy details of the School Board, feel welcome. Okay, next part is the consent agenda. Are there any questions or anything about the consent agenda? Okay, go ahead, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Alrighty, that is approved. Now we have our items for information, the first one is the meeting minutes from our last June 13th School Board meeting, so if you guys have any changes or modifications, please let Tammy, our clerk, let us, let her know that if she needs to make any changes. And then the next thing is a presentation by Mrs. Rachel Roydinger.
While we're waiting for Ms. Roydinger to start, I do want to acknowledge Ms. Grace Stinson, she is filling in for Mike Cargill today in live streaming, so she has taken over the technology, we can see you in there, our technology aspects for today, so I just want to say thank you very much, we know how important it is to be able to provide multimedia for our community and being able to demonstrate everything that we share. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, good evening. I wanted to share a RFP that we had for mental health services for this upcoming school year for, to help our students. As you know, previously, we had had an agreement with the Madeline Center, who had begun to provide outpatient therapy towards the end of last school year. The Madeline Center notified us that they were no longer able to provide us with, guarantee that they could provide us with outpatient therapy services, and TDT had already been something that had declined throughout the year last year. So, we set out for an RFP, and I had done some research last spring in looking at both what Madeline Center was offering for, for the outpatient model, and also looking at other organizations who also provided that model. We did receive two bids. The first bid provide, would require us to pay $100 an hour. The second bid that we have is from Life Bridge Counseling, and that is of no cost to our school division. They would follow the same model, really, that the Madeline Center was providing, which is they either bill Medicaid, or they will bill private insurance if the parents give consent for, for their private insurance to be charged. Much like the services that we were beginning to have previously, there's a very quick intake process as opposed to therapeutic day treatment, and they can add clinicians as we increase the number of students who are referred for services. So, it's something that has the potential to grow. One of the things that I was particularly mindful of, especially given the challenges that the Madeline Center had, was with staffing our area, is seeing, you know, I was pretty upfront with this, with the organization, with Life Bridge, and said, you know, we're a great community, but we are rural, and sometimes it's hard to find people who are willing to make the commute. And the great thing about this, about Life Bridge, is that they actually have experience both in more of your suburban, urban areas, and also very small rural areas, and I always say this wrong, Buena Vista, or is it Buena Vista? You know what I'm talking about, Buena Vista.
Depends on where you're from.
There we go. There we go. So they have Bodataut, which is a little bit larger, but still, they, they're used to rural, and some of the larger ones such as Roanoke City. So, they were very frank with me and saying, yes, it is easier to find people in places like Colonial Heights or Roanoke, but we're gonna work hard to find people where you are, and we have experience finding people in smaller divisions as well. So I found that to be really promising. So, with your permission, we'd love to go into a memorandum of understanding with Life Bridge Counseling to continue to provide that outpatient therapy services during the school day for our students, just to open the door for maybe those who otherwise might not be able to get services elsewhere. So that's what I have. Any questions? It is, it is, but they, I'm actually pleased, I think, I think it'll be a good partnership. Thank you. Of course.
Do you know if they do any business with some of our local school divisions?
So the references that they gave me were Bodataut, Roanoke City, Colonial Heights, Buena Vista, and, yep, and Roanoke Public Schools, so, the closest I could get was Buena Vista. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Alright, now we have Mr. Campbell, most exciting part of the day.
Alright, so, I want to talk a little bit about where we are on our renovation project. So it is, I've provided some pictures as we go around, so you can see the new lights in the auditorium, it's really bright. So, we're still waiting on a few things to wrap that project up. We have the, the control console that goes in the sound booth, I'm waiting on Barbara Zahn to come install that, and they have some training to provide to everyone how to operate the new system. So, HVAC equipment for the renovation, the larger equipment, we're still looking at November, December for delivery for the chillers. The plan is to install those wintertime and be ready to start up during, when the cold season starts next, next year. The four rooftop units that go over the high school gym, with discussing the project with Honeywell, I'd asked them if they could guarantee if they was to start taking them off, that the units would be operational before the eighth, they could not, so I've asked to put that project off until fall, for the cold season's over with. So, some of this stuff is extended out due just to timing. The hot water tank installation, they started, they pulled the old tank out Monday, they, when they arrived, as you can see on the, with the trailer, that's new tank, they realized that some of the metal framing that they had designed to have on the new tank was not on it, so they could not install the new tank Monday, because the chain, the rigging crew cannot hook the chain hoist up to the unit without damaging it. So they took the tank back Monday and to the crane yard. Honeywell went and they cut some of the old metal framing off the old tank and adapted it to the new tank in order to be able to get the new tank in, into the basement. I just talked to Honeywell late this afternoon before I, before I left from the office, and they're coming Saturday to, and they've got all the, the new metal framing on, they're coming Saturday to set the new tank.
How does it, how's it gonna get in to the building?
Well, so they have chain hoist, they hook to above the ceiling, we've got metal structures above the ceiling that they have had to reinforce, and they have chain hoist, and they just, it just, they get it to the door, they've got a forklift with really long forks on it. It was an operation, you could tell these guys had done this before.
It just goes right in the doors? It's gonna fit in the doors?
There's two big double doors down there, so it does open up quite large. So, there's several of them.
Oh, interesting.
So, yes, so that...
Remind me never to go there.
Well, if you want a tour, I'd be more than happy.
Ah, okay. Maybe we'll wait till Halloween.
So we, they're gonna set the new tank Saturday, they're gonna start Monday, the technician that's actually doing the project spoke, he come by the office this afternoon. They actually, because we kind of set June, July the 20th for an end date, to have the hot water and all back up to the complex, because of the tank arriving without the metal structure on it, it put them behind, they could not install it. They have rented an Airbnb for next week, and he said, we're gonna work as long as we can to try to get your water back up like we promised for the 20th, so fingers crossed that everything will come back up like it's supposed to. So, yeah, we had a little delay there. Phase two of the renovation, we're starting now, I know it doesn't start till next year, but there's some steps we have to do now. One of them is a hazmat inspection, reconstruction, kind of identifying where the hazmat... One of them is a hazmat inspection, reconstruction, kind of identifying where the hazardous material is in the building. I've got that scheduled, he's supposed to start, the company's supposed to start the 17th to start that inspection. It's going to take about a week to complete. The walk-in refrigerator, as we know, we've been having issues with that for a while. Chrissy was able to obtain three bids. They're starting on the 22nd to install Riddle Burger, won the bid, and they're going to start on the 22nd to install the new refrigeration unit. So hopefully we'll have everything back up and running before school starts. Rockfish RTU 2 HVAC unit, we're still struggling with that unit. I provided some pictures. It's kind of hard to tell what you're looking at there, but that is the inside of the unit, and that wall that looks kind of bowed is not supposed to look like that. That is made, that supplies the air to the front hallway, both upstairs and downstairs. It is bowed out, and there's air actually seeping around the wall of the unit. These units are 26 years old. They, you know, they're pretty worn out. So I've asked Honeywell, because we still have a service contract regardless, I've asked Honeywell to come up with a solution to put this back together so we're not leaking air out and we can get it into the school where it belongs. So the units have been down for a few days this week. I've been working with Honeywell to try to get, there's two large units there in telepacs that are down. So we're trying, they're trying to get those up, and then kicks worked out before.
I'm just meeting up at the office down here, everything. I'm here at Honeywell, just telling them to move an office in.
Yes, absolutely. So the logging project, I just wanted to provide you guys with a few pictures of what that looks like and what they're, what they've accomplished. As you can see, the two, the first two pictures are, that's where the pines used to be, the large section of pines. And if you kind of, the last one's kind of hard to see, but that's where all the hardwood is, and it's a big open area there where they cut all of that, so.
If you want to not start all cleaning that. So what's going to be, what's that going to be, just grass?
I think that long-term plans, I do believe that the FFA organization wants to put a learning lab down there in that area.
But you'll have to plant grass for that, right?
There should, there's probably going to have to be. I'm not 100% sure of what the EPA regulations are for the logger before he pulls out.
Ah, right.
So I'm sure there's going to have to be some type of covering to prevent runoff from heavy rains and stuff, so. But we're keeping an eye on it and just kind of keeping up with the project to make sure everything is completed.
The logging company, we feel pretty confident is looking out for us as well, as they are, have a strong connection to Nelson County, alumni at Nelson County High School. So it's kind of nice to see that bring come, bring it full circle to individuals who, at their school.
Yep.
And they're trying to give back and help us out, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, fabulous.
Any questions?
And the elevator at Rockfish needs to be moved up on the CIP list?
Yes, so that elevator, I think we talked about once before, it has a countdown. So every time the cart cycles, it counts. And then, once it gets to a, whatever the number that is, it shuts down and the company has to come out and reset it. They have, they have suggested replacing it a couple of years back.
I remember you bringing that up.
Mm-hmm, yes. So what my concern is, as we go into the school year, once that elevator becomes necessary and it's down, then we have some issues that we have to deal with. What I've, what I've noticed is the time span, the response time with the elevator company to be able to get to the school. We are a priority, but it's, you're still, even if you're down a day or two, it's, you know. I actually have a meeting scheduled with the elevator company Monday morning to discuss the response times that they have been giving us, to see what we can do. In the meantime, until we can do something different. I have suggested to them to come, to put us on a monthly schedule, to come out once a month and to just reset it.
So do we know what that number is, Les?
I do not know what that number is. I don't know, I don't have any cart cycles that is. We, I've even asked if it's something we can do. It requires a laptop and their programming and stuff to be able to plug into it.
So there's nothing that we could then keep count of it?
Right, yes. They, Rockfish does their best to try to limit the use of it because they know that there's a countdown to it.
It happens about every like month and a half, maybe two.
Yeah, but if it's at the wrong time, then that's.
Exactly.
It's access.
Yeah.
It's a safety, major safety issue.
If we got stuck in it, that'd be pretty grim.
Well, it grounds, it grounds when it resets, right?
Yes.
It goes first floor.
Oh, well, that's good.
So, yeah, it's just something, and I know that it's an ongoing issue, and like you, like I said, if it, even if it takes a day for the response, it's still a day too long.
How much does one cost? We've talked about this before.
So I can tell you that the modernization of the high school elevator, it's about 120,000. So you probably replacement, you're probably close upwards towards 200,000 or so.
Yeah, because it's a little.
When you, when you talk to them, see if there's some way we can, they can give us access to accounting, I mean, just how that works or, you know, something, because, I mean, just knowing the number would help out a lot.
Sure.
You know, I mean, I know it might not be possible, but it's a question with me.
Absolutely, I'm sure.
Do we have to redo the entirety of the structure of the elevator or just the software, the system?
It's, well, not 100% sure, but I know that with the modernization of the elevator in the high school, it's the components, it's the operational components of it. So once the elevator is modernized at the high school, you're still going to look at the same door.
Right.
The cart stays the same, it's just all the operations that go with it to control the hydraulics and all, like the motor, the circuit boards and stuff and that sort of stuff. So I will ask those questions Monday, and hopefully I can have some more answers for you guys next school board meeting.
It'd just be nice to know if we can kind of keep track of it ourselves and then.
Know what's coming up.
Know what's coming up and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Urban, you're up. Personnel and budget finance, please.
We want to talk about first.
You get it, all right. At this time of year, we get to see you all the time.
There you go, there you go. I guess to follow up on some capital investment projects that just where we just were, I'd like to talk about wrapping up the roof project that we just did. And there is some timing issues involving the appropriation of funds from the county that's making our financial statements look a little wonky. So if you noticed on the financial report that we just approved, it looked like there was a large balance of funds there. So I wanted to explain how that happened and what to do moving forward. So the anticipated cost to replace the roof was $4,536,938. The project actually came in under budget because we did not have to utilize the contingency because the asbestos wasn't an issue, and we didn't have, you know, moisture that would cause the roof bed to rust that we had to remediate. So a lot of good news there. So what we spent was $4,510,408.68. So we were $25,989.32 under budget. In addition to that, when we were looking at our S R 3 grant, we found that there were some items that we could not do because of not being able to find personnel to fill roles that we wanted to do in terms of behavior specialists in mental health. So we transferred an additional $82,155 from that grant to cover the roof project. So all told, the county spent $108,144.32 less for the roof project than had been anticipated. Where the project becomes a little muddy is that we started the project in fiscal year '23. We paid for all of the materials early because we wanted to beat the price rush in the end of December. And so all of the materials were paid in fiscal year '23. In addition, the labor for the project wasn't to begin until after school was out in May of '23. So they really only had one month of work to do on the project, so we did not feel the need to ask the county to appropriate funds in that fiscal year because the county, if they appropriate more than, I think it's 1% in their budget, they have to have a public hearing and go through a lot of hoops to appropriate funds. We had had all of our S R money appropriated. We have a lump sum appropriation from the county, so there was already enough money appropriated in our budget to not have to do that. Okay. Fast forward into fiscal year '24, we asked the county to appropriate their portion of the roof project, not thinking that we would have gotten a large build in June for the work, I guess, all of the mobilization and all the fees. So we ended up spending $1,636,731.25 to Escola in fiscal year '23. So most of the expense was incurred in fiscal year '23, though the appropriation didn't hit our books until fiscal year '24. So all told, it's going to show that there's about a $2 million thereabout balance in the capital fund because of the timing of the appropriations. Does that make sense? So I have talked to the finance director and to the county administrator, and they are aware and are expecting that we would be making a request to the county to be able to utilize that funds for other capital projects of the division, once the audit has been confirmed and that balance is known. Because in effect, the school division spent its money in fiscal year '23, which would have been returned to the county. So I wanted to make you aware of that, and the discussions have been had and how that came about. The other thing I guess I'd like to bring up is the solar project that we have quit out for bid. We had four respondents. We've scheduled a meeting with those vendors on July the 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. If there are any board members that would like to be on the committee to hear their presentations or to see what they can do for us, we'd invite you to be a part of that. I'm going to need over at the high school library, assuming that space is available.
What day is it?
July 25th.
Nine to one?
Nine to one, yeah. We've allowed them each an hour to talk. So we're going to listen to all four respondents. All right. Trying to close out last year's budget, we have a copy of a sheet that looks like this, pencil lines on it. In accounting, if there's a way to make it confusing, I think we do it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So we have to balance both on a cash basis and an accrual basis with our treasurer. So cash basis means, you know, if you look at your bank account, if I write a check, you know, it's going to come out right then. Accrual basis is going to take into account the revenue for the expenses that we incurred but haven't gotten reimbursed from the federal government yet, so they'll give us credit for that revenue. But we also have to subtract off expenses that were incurred in the previous fiscal year that we didn't pay until July, and then add in expenses that we will pay over this next 90 days and accrue them back to last fiscal year. So it's all in the timing of when the expenses and when the revenues hit the books. So I guess I'm happy to say that we are going to be showing, you know, a fund balance, and we'll be working on the accruals. We had our first accounts payable run today, and one big accrued expense is the final payment for the roof, which was the retainage of $123,693.75. So, you know, those bills will come in, the light bills will come in, the phone bills will come in. We'll have some personnel costs for summer school and things that happened up until the last days of June. So it's a work in progress, but just wanted to hopefully rest assured that we're in good shape. All right, and on the personnel front, I'm going to give kudos to our personnel staff for really working to address our vacancies in a very difficult climate in terms of, especially in terms of teachers and professionals. I want to give you a lowdown of where we are today, though we do have some irons in the fire that we're still trying to get some folks in to interview. So right now, we have four custodial vacancies. Two of them are at the high school, one at the middle school, and one at Rockfish. We have three instructional assistants, two at Rockfish, and one to be assigned, a maintenance mechanic, a bus mechanic. We have a special ed teacher that has requested release from contract. We have an elementary teacher, he's requested release from contract. Speech pathologist, it's a very difficult, highly skilled position, it's difficult to find. We did put out an RSP, and those results are supposed to come in next week, so we'll look to see if we can change the model to possibly contract that physician out. We have an 80% position for art at Rockfish, and we've offered that position as a long-term sub because it's been open a very long time with no applicants. We have an athletic trainer position open, still working on part-time driver's ed, and an alternative ed position. So we're looking at 11, 13, 17 positions, it looks like at the moment, out of over 50 that we started with, so kudos to HR. Any questions that I think I should help you with?
I don't know. You guys good?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. As always.
Sure.
All right. Now Dr. Hester, you've got the rest of the rest there.
Well, the first update that we have is on our student code of conduct. Earlier this week, Governor Yonkin released his executive order regarding cell phones and the cellphone use, and that executive order had two main goals. One is to support the health and safety of students by limiting the amount of time that they are exposed to addictive cell phones and social media, as well as eliminating clear distractions in the classroom. So first of all, it is greatly appreciated to have the support and recognition of the obstacles that cell phones in classrooms in schools can pose, and being able to address it from, one, a health and safety standpoint, but two, the distraction and interruptions to instruction. So one of the callings of this executive order is to establish age-appropriate restrictions that are elimination of cellphone use during instructional time. The reason why I oppose that is currently Nelson County Public Schools' policy on cellphone use is strongly aligned with this executive order. I do want to say that the implementation of this through the governor, he has put that through the actual implementation date, January 1st, 2025. As we all know, we start school on August 8th. It's really hard to change policies or change implementation of rules midstream. In this instance, we're already aligned with the outline of this, and so really what it is going to be is working with our administrators, just kind of going back through and reviewing our policy in the school protocols, and then also what to do when we have noncompliance with the, with the rules. And this will take a collaborative effort among the administrators and staff and parents. It's another key component, kind of if you look at it as a stool, a three-legged stool, is you have the administrators and you have the staff who are in the classrooms with these individuals, and then you have the students and the families, and really getting the parents to understand what's behind this. And it's not just a restriction of having a cellphone at all, it's when is it being used? And so this will require some clear and consistent communication and review of the expectations. We do reviews of expectations in the beginning of the school year anyway, but having those conversations a little bit sooner. In the meantime, there will be some feedback sessions being put on by the Virginia Department of Education. And I think one of the big things to acknowledge anytime you have kind of a call to action on this is acknowledging that one of the aspects of this expectation is sometimes on this is acknowledging that one of the aspects of this expectation, and sometimes it causes concerns for parents and guardians, is for students who need to be monitored for health reasons. An example would be students with diabetes may have an app where they monitor their sugar levels or their blood levels. And in those situations, just like we already have in places, communicating with the teacher, the school nurse, administrators, so we come up with a plan and a strategy of how to work with those students, and that's already in place. So it's not eliminating the ability of a student to be able to do that. And I don't want anybody to feel like it's just a complete restriction of that and it's using that common sense approach to it, but the communication piece is communicating with your administrators and your teachers about certain situations like this. Typically, their families are already doing this, and so we appreciate that partnership. Furthermore, families with emergencies, we hear this coming up. Well, if I have an emergency, I need to contact my child right away. Well, I think it's thinking through that. If there is a family emergency, call the main office, talk to an administrator and create a plan for how you want to bring that child out of a classroom and be able to communicate some of that. This isn't a want for the schools to know everybody's business. This is a way for keeping our students safe. We do know that there are a lot of issues that come about from having students having cell phones and using it during that instructional time, but it's about working with adults to help monitor this and help provide a safety net for that. And so we're not eliminating parents being able to get a hold of their students, it's creating a clear and coherent plan of how to do that, where the adults don't become the interruption in a classroom, but really being able to create a plan and using that time to be able to do that. So I don't want anybody to think, oh, my gosh, we're just completely removing everything. We've been doing this, but it will take a review. I think like anything else coming out of the pandemic and coming out of other situations, it's how do we implement this and staying sure to it. Consistent, starting from the very beginning, staying consistent with it and being very clear about what our expectations are in supporting that. I will be participating in a V D O E cellphone policy listening session with the state superintendent, as well as the other superintendents in Ranger Five, that'll take place on July 31st. We'll be asking some questions in clarity and some guidelines of what the V D O E is going to roll out, because they are asking for school divisions to create protocols of how parents can communicate in the event of emergencies. And I think we all recognize the situation with Uvalde and the role that cell phones did play in providing some safety and alerts for students. And so it's really talking through that and being able to have a good, clear plan to identify this policy. So for some people who are interested in looking at where this is, it's on page 31 of our student code of conduct. It's also under our board docs and our policies, under J, I'm sorry, under J F C dash R. So it is clearly outlined what that is. So we will kind of be talking about that coming up with our administrators, but we've already been reviewing our code of conduct and how does it align with the executive order. Another thing that we really want to bring attention to is not only in our policies and our student code of conduct, but it's school attendance. And that is under policy J E D and J E D dash R. Attendance in battling chronic absenteeism has been a major initiative, not only Governor Yonkin, but the V U E, but Nelson County Public Schools. Prior to the pandemic, N C P S saw chronic absenteeism numbers in single digits. Post-pandemic, some of those numbers were in the high 20s and 30s. Thank you to the efforts of our administrators, teachers, staff and our families, N C P S has drastically reduced the number of chronically absent students to almost half of what we saw two years ago. So we are getting back to where, you know, three of our four schools are at level one now, drastic reduction. Any other, at the high school level, we see more and more of that absenteeism, and we're going to be working on that, but they had drastic reduction in that. So that doesn't just come naturally, that's not easy. It has taken a lot of effort and a lot of cooperation, and I appreciate everybody who's been involved in that. And it's just continuing to communicate that expectation. For those of you wondering, well, what is chronic absenteeism? Chronic absenteeism is defined as students who miss 10% or more of the school year, and that is inclusive of excused absences, unexcused absences and suspensions. So next steps that we really need to take is kind of getting with our local medical facilities and getting an explanation of, hey, when we write notes, let's make sure that we understand the impact. We don't want our students coming to school sick, but it's having that clear understanding of when it's okay to come to school and when it's not. And in getting an understanding of every one of our students that matters and what attendance is, is all day, every day, from the start to the finish. So our tendency in reducing chronic absenteeism is important, it will continue to be a priority. For those of you really super interested in learning more about what we feel about chronic absenteeism and attendances, page 23 in our student conduct talks about accumulating excessive absences. We will be working with the definition of excessive being 10 or more cumulative, but also working with our families to understand what is causing those absences. So we kind of, once we see students getting to 10, whether it's excused or unexcused, then we start to work with our parents to develop a plan to support attendance. So just wanted to kind of alert you as to where is that located in our code of conduct? The expectation of attendance is reiterated by also judge through our juvenile courts and a written letter that is also on page 26, if you are interested in reading that. Interestingly, and not ironically, all of these are tied together with disruptive behaviors. Also, not only disruptive behaviors, but also defiance. So all of these are tied together. We want to make sure that ultimately taking care of and supporting what we're here, and that's to learn and be in a safe environment. And so we continue to review these policies all the time and how does it impact our code of conduct. But I did want to alert you that we are, we have reviewed what the policy is, we will continue to participate in with the V D O E, with listening sessions, but we feel pretty good about the strong alignment that we already have, but really how are we going to implement it and how are we going to sustain that? Questions? Any questions about the handbook? Okay. It's pretty exciting.
Well done on decrease in the absenteeism.
Yeah, they phenomenal.
I think people think that that's like a system, it's just a Nelson County thing. That's a law, that's, there's legality to that.
Well, yeah, not only is it a law, but there's like tremendous amount of evidence that demonstrates that when you miss 10% or more, how impactful it is to literacy and math and really see it with math, but all of it, the mental health of students decreases with the increase in absences. So it is a very much a whole child concern.
Well, that was well done. I know that took effort, commitment on the part of not just the parents, but our staff and administrators, so well done.
The policy updates?
Yeah, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'm already here. We're excited about that. All right, so any questions about the policy updates that you see for May? Significant number of them are just updating by legislative code changes, additions of items addressing literacy plans, whether it's reading specialists, or we have submitted our literacy plan already in our June meeting, we finalized the plan and then also approved materials, so that's kind of all wrapped into one. I think it was very interesting, the addition of public participation at school board meetings and including students and making sure that our students have the same opportunities that our residents and adults have and being able to advocate for themselves. But primarily, you know, most of it, we saw what was coming and kind of are already doing a lot of what we see here. We do see some of the new legislation, fentanyl education, there is new for health education in terms of permitting schools to teach administration at different developmental appropriate levels. So there is a lot of integration of those laws, which I think this past year was an unprecedented number of items to be codified specific to education.
Well, this is our second reading, so we have questions, now's the time to ask. All right, darling, one more.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Do you want to talk about the August school board meeting? You don't have to stay out there if you don't want to.
We can talk about it, sure. It is the first day of school. So I know, I think the first year I was here, we had it on the first day of school, and then I think last year we bumped it, but we're back, so I think it's just worth a conversation about what's going on, because I think a lot of times that first days of school are always crazy. But I know we talked about it last year, so I'll just put it back to you guys.
So do you have a preference, or just kick it to the 15th?
I'm just making sure I bring it up.
I was just asking if you had a preference, if you knew, if you had hold of everybody who has to attend. So you don't remember chairs? All right.
It's sounding like.
Is that like a shh place? All right.
I mean, I would say that it is my school based staff that are the most taxed.
They were watching expressions.
Yeah, it is. It's a busy day for everyone. We're all in East Village coming on that day, but that is a big day to pound. And then to have them be here, that's difficult, so unless we want to just completely dismiss and have it on the 8th, because they don't come, or we have it on the 15th, we have everybody here. I think it's a great way to kind of say, hey, this is what happened this last week.
All right, we just need to know what we're moving it to so we can have a.
15.
Right, so somebody can do a.
Yep, we've got it down here.
All right, so now we're into items for action. We need to approve the Light Bridge Counseling for outpatient mental health services, so.
I move that we approve the MOU with Light Bridge Counseling for outpatient mental health services for Nelson County.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the handbook code of conduct for 24, 25. I need a motion, a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the parent handbook code of conduct for 2024, 2025.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need to approve the August 15th date for the school board meeting.
What?
Oh, sorry, I missed that one. We need to approve the B S B A policy updates, this is our second meeting of those.
I make a motion that we approve the B S B A policy updates.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfecto, now we do August 15th for school board meeting.
I move that we approve or change the date of the August school board meeting from August 8th to August 15th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't care. Now, does anybody want to talk about the adult meal prices, or do we want to just go with whatever they're? Any questions?
It's not optional.
Okay, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the attached prices for adult meals 2024, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now I guess we have textbook surpluses, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the declare textbook surplus.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done. Now, we will need to go into closed session today for, as far as I know, personnel matters. Do we have any other matters that we need to consider?
Just personnel.
Just personnel, all right, so I will entertain a motion for that.
I move that the board go into closed session to discuss and consider the personnel report and other confidential personnel matters as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1. For purposes of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in closed session. Thank you so much for coming.